Committeeman Clark. Committeewoman Kratz.
Here.
Committeeman Sedembrino.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Here.
Mayor Perry.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to honor the troops serving worldwide, defending our constitutions, freedoms, and way of life. Thank you. Our first item on tonight's agenda, we have a presentation of the 2023 Dennis J. Beauregard Veteran of the Year Award to Robert W. Seamer. At this time, I'd like to please invite Robert Seamer to please come forward.
Go on, Ray. All right, well, good evening, everybody. Um, it's, I was just talking to the team upstairs. I said it's Veterans Day here at, uh, here in Middletown Township. There you go. I think he was gonna say. It's, it's only our second, second time standing giving this award because the first time we did it, Dennis nominated Bob, Bob nominated Dennis. And in the end, uh, it's kind of humbling to now go to the opposite side of, of who did not receive it because, uh, now Bob will be receiving the Dennis J. Beauregard Veteran of the Year Award. Um, but real quick, for those of you who don't know these two gentlemen up here, um, there is, is honest to God, not two people in this town that work harder for our veterans every single day. Um, I, I'm humbled to stand up here, um, with the, with these guys. And I called Bob, uh, late last year and told him that he had been selected to receive this award. And to show you how humble this guy is, he said, "I don't think I'm deserving. I didn't do enough in 2023 to take this award, to, to receive this award." Um, and when you talk about the, the spirit of America, when you talk about patriotism, when you talk about individuals that day in and day out live and breathe what it is to be a veteran, that their service may have ended in, in conflicts far away, but their true valor, their, their victory, their efforts, and their strive to make every veteran's life better, um, is embodied by both of you. And Bob, this year, we, we are so humbled as, as a township committee to have you here for everything that you do for our veterans. Um, so very quickly, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go through this because this is a, this is a pretty impressive list that I got here for you, Bob. Bob served in the U.S. Army from 1916 to 1971, held the rank of First Lieutenant with the First Cowherly Combat Engineer from 1970 to 1971, and is a Vietnam veteran. He earned many Service Ribbons such as the National Defense Medal, Vietnam Service Air Medal, Bronze Star, and Soldier's Medal with the Oak Leaf Cluster. For the past six years, Bob has served on the Middletown Veterans Affairs Committee, where he enjoys helping local veterans enhance their quality of life. Bob's worked tirelessly to help veterans file claims for compensation of benefits for their disability, and Bob has co-chaired the BACS booth for five years at Middletown Day, where he interacts with local veterans and answers questions about VA benefits and encourages them to join the Veterans Affairs Committee. Bob has served as chairman of multiple committees, designed directional street signs to highlight local veterans monuments in town, and has started the Patriots Program as well. Um, there are very few people who work as, as hard as you, Bob, and you are incredibly deserving. And, and I have to tell you, when I called you to let you know, um, and you said that you weren't, you weren't, you didn't think you were worthy enough, you had half of the mayor's crew in tears at the fact that Robert Seamer didn't think that he was, he was, did enough for veterans. Um, Bob, you have done more for veterans than you'll ever know in this township, and you are more than deserving of this award. So I want to congratulate you, my friend. You are beyond deserving, and you are Middletown's Veteran of the Year. Goodbye. So before they, before they snag all the pictures, and I'm trying not to touch, touch it so that my fingerprints aren't all over it, all right? The Veteran of the Year is hereby presented to Robert W. Seamer in recognition of your wholehearted dedication to our community, devotion to and inspiring educating our youth and the development of Thank the Veteran Program, which encourages local businesses to support those who have honorably served our nation, given to you by the Middletown Township Committee, March 18th, 2024. Congratulations, my friend.
One, two, three.
Uh, you, uh, should we go? I didn't know if they wanted to let me say something.
Excuse me. I'd like to thank Mayor Perry and all the members of the Township Committee for this award that they've just given me. Um, I really think I'm accepting it on behalf of all the Middletown veterans, where we do have a lot of veterans in Middletown. And in their own way, I think each veteran contributes to our community. We have a great community here. So I, I'd like to accept it on behalf of all the veterans, especially the number one veteran here, my mentor, Dennis, who got me involved, uh, got me off the couch, who got me up doing things for the veterans. So I appreciate him, and he, he's shown me a lot how to do things to help veterans file those claims and things like that. Uh, the other person or persons, Dennis and I, and I'm sure the other veterans would have to thank, is our significant others. My wife Cheryl backs me up and supports me in everything we do. The Township Committee, we interact with the township a lot, but our primary go-to person for us, I have to acknowledge the efforts of Tara and Raven. But every time we need something, they're there for us. That's about all. The only other thing I'd like to say is, uh, it's a quote from Ronald Reagan. Some people spend their entire lifetimes wondering if they've ever made a difference in the world. A veteran doesn't have that problem.
That's a good one, Bob. Excellent.
Fast, uh, a week ago, I was honored to hand the awards. They gave me the honor and name of a service dog. Well, it comes to mind, a name I've named a partner. Partner is my partner here. He is there for me when I need him, for comforting and for assistance. Bike call, he makes sure I get up. Bob, I have to call my partner.
Let's give it up for these guys real quick.
Hey, Mayor.
All right, Heidi.
Okay, our next item on tonight's agenda, we have the approval of minutes for February 20th, 2024 regular meeting, the March 4th, 2024 workshop meeting, executive session minutes for December 18th, 2023, February 2024, February 2020, uh, February 20th, 2024, and March 4th, 2024.
Motion to approve. Second.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to approve minutes. At this time, we have introduction of ordinance 2024-3408, an ordinance for calendar year 2024 to exceed the municipal budget appropriations limits and to establish a cap bank per NJSA
Motion to introduce. Second.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held April 8th, 2024. At this time, we have ordinance, uh, for introduction, 2024-3409, a bond ordinance providing an appropriation of $9,200,000 for the development and construction of affordable housing for veterans, buy-in for the Township of Middletown in the County of Monmouth, New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of $4 million in bonds or notes of the Township for financing part of the appropriation.
Motion to introduce. Second.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Absolutely.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held April 8th, 2024. At this time, I'd like to ask the Township Committee to adopt a consent agenda, which would include Resolutions 24-111 through 24-120, including firefighter applications for Matthew Gowski, Melissa Tim, and Chris Weimer for Navasook, Navasink Hook, and Ladder Company Number One.
Motion to approve consent agenda. Second.
Committeewoman, Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt consent agenda. At this time, we have the Township Committee acting as the ABC issuing authority. We have Resolution 24-121, a resolution authorizing person-to-person and place-to-place transfer of plenty retail consumption license 1331-33-030-011, which is, uh, from John Orko to Lifetime Fitness.
Motion to approve. Second.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt Resolution 24-121. We have Township Committee comments.
All right, Committeeman Sedembrino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to be short this evening, um, congratulate Bob, known him for a long time, uh, certainly all the time I've been on this committee and Veteran of the Year, well deserved, um, certainly second, second to none. So congratulations to Bob. And, uh, I'm sorry, Mayor, I missed the skate park grand opening, couldn't make it back in time, but I understand that Deputy Mayor Hybel has scheduled a skate off with all the members of the Township Committee next Saturday.
Yep.
But when, and when Heidi will let us know when we have the time, and we expect everyone to be there to watch us.
I, I think we might hold our next Township Committee meeting, to be perfectly honest.
That's a, that's a, that's a great park, Mayor, and that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Committeewoman Kratz.
Thank you, Mayor. So also just want to extend my congratulations to Bob. I too have known him for, for some time, and it's been a pleasure. I've gotten the opportunity to work with him and, and watch him in action, and he is truly a force. So very grateful for his service to our country, to our community, and, and to our children. He's also, um, you know, served as, as a ref in, in different capacities through BYAA too, so he is, he is truly well-deserving of, of this award for sure. So I offer my congratulations. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Deputy Mayor.
Gotta congratulate, congratulate Bob. I don't know where he went. He ran out with the trophy so fast, I don't know which way he went, but, uh, he, he is truly an amazing person. Uh, I've, I've worked with him since I've been on this committee, and he just does a fabulous job, so excited to have him, uh, receive that award tonight. Uh, I also want to talk about the Conover Beacon, John wrote so nicely about in The Two River Times. Uh, that was an amazing, uh, thing that we were able to accomplish, and Ted and his crew, uh, I, I climbed the 45 feet, which I didn't know was 45 feet, but, uh, it is as clean inside as it is outside. Our Public Works did a fabulous job, amazing job. Skate park, I don't think I'm gonna be doing those things, Kevin. I'm sorry, I can't do it, but Mayor Perry said he's, uh...
Lame. So lame.
Um, I hope with the crowd here, everyone's not gonna be talking about the skate park, but, uh, it seemed to be a big hit. Uh, every, every couple days, I pass through it, and I see people skating and having a good time, and that's, uh, that's the purpose of that park there, so hopefully, uh, stays good and clean as it is. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, the, the restoration of the Conover Beacon, truly an unbelievable effort, and, uh, Ted, I want, I want to thank the crew again. After months and months and months searching for a crew that was willing to do the work on the inside and being unable to find anyone that was willing to do the work, and our Public Works crew put their heads together, figured it out, learned what they had to learn, and got it done ourselves and in-house was, um, pretty unbelievable. Um, they should be really proud. And then the fact that the restoration of, you know, I, I saw a picture from 2004, and the, the beacon didn't look all that in rough shape. Um, and to look at it only just a few years ago now, um, versus what it looks like today, um, is just spectacular. Um, there was a guy there who even had a tattoo of the Conover Beacon who showed me and was very happy that we stuck with the original paint scheme of the, because he thought he was gonna have to get his tattoo redone, um, of the lighthouse. He lives in Bricktown, too, Joe. Does he? Yes. Oh, I didn't know that.
Where was the tattoo, Mayor?
It was, it was very clear, right in the middle of his chest. Um, it, it couldn't have been easy to get that, um, but that's dedication through and through. But to the community from Leonardo that came out for the beacon, uh, thank you. Um, I am so proud of, of that restoration. I'm so proud of our team. I'm proud of everybody that was involved, and to see the excitement of the community from Leonardo in particular come out and be so appreciative of the fact that that beacon now lights back up for the community was unbelievable. To see the community rally around the old roller rink at Kunkel Park and see the new skate park, um, which was born out of people trying to find escapes during the pandemic, yes, they did something that, that they shouldn't have done, um, but something great did come out of that. And, and from the DIY park, skate park, um, was built this new skate park, and to see people of all ages, of, 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 from all over Middletown coming and enjoying that, to see community businesses come and also participate, whether that was giving out helmets for free, uh, the pizza, Julio's Pizza in Atlantic Islands, um, coming out and donating the pizza because the owners are Leonardo residents, um, was just awesome. And, you know, I, I know that, that World Construction started today over at McMahon on our new all-inclusive park, uh, playground for, for kids of, of all abilities. Um, the, the dog park being wrapped up on March 25th with the changes that we made, it's great to see that these, um, projects are coming to fruition. And tonight, the fact that we've awarded that remediation for the Veterans Housing Project, um, to, to finalize the environmental that, that was there. And I, I also just want to quickly thank Tony and Colleen. Uh, I want to thank Rick Colber. I want to thank his team at the Middletown Housing Authority. Um, you know, we put out the Veterans Housing Project to bid last year. The Housing Authority put out the, the Veterans Housing Project to bid last year, and we had originally budgeted $5.5 million for that project. Um, the lowest bid that came in was $8.3 million, just, just under 8.3 million. And because everybody got their heads together, nobody rushed anything, we did it the right way, we tried to figure out, yes, it's, it's, it moved too slow, but we got our heads together, we figured out the way to make it work, where we were not putting anybody at risk from a financial perspective in terms of the town, the Housing Authority, or any, any other parties. We figured out how to do it with the plan that we had in place, the plan that we had promised, we, and here we are, where we expect to award that bid, um, at our May 6th meeting, when we go out to bid. So that project, and to see all these projects at different phases coming through, they're definitely not, not all of them are moving at the speeds that I thought they would, um, but all of them are moving, and I'm very proud of that fact. I'm very grateful to have a Township Committee that's willing to put those dollars together and get those things done for the people of this town. So, um, so I, I won't go on any longer. Uh, I'll open it up for public comment. Oh, yeah, I, I am gonna go on for another minute. Um, tonight, we are starting something, um, new. We announced it as, as early as we could, um, late last week, um, but tonight, uh, during our regular Township Committee meetings, um, we have announced that we have standardized our hours, um, as well as created an opportunity. We understand that residents can't get to Town Hall between 8 o'clock and 4 o'clock. Uh, we, we, we know that, that there's a lot of people working out there, and they just can't make it. We're trying to create that convenience, uh, as best we can for the residents. So, uh, most, if not all of our public-facing departments, whether that's the Clerk's Office, passports, um, whether that is, uh, our planning office, um, uh, who else? Zoning Health, Building, uh, Court as well, all these resources are now available to the public to, to come out between 5:30 and 7:30 during, on the meeting nights, to come and know that they can come without an appointment and meet with, uh, folks within those departments. So we're just trying to open up Town Hall so that people have the opportunities to be able to, uh, to interact with, uh, with their township, um, outside of those normal business hours. So I'm gonna thank the team that was part of that, um, and getting that done. So with that being said, I'll open it up for public comment. Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment may do so. We ask that you state your name and address for the record. We ask that you keep your comments to five minutes. At four minutes, I'll let you know that you have one minute remaining. With that being said, any member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Yeah, you know what? Actually, before I ask, any of the students want to add, so you're, you're all from Communications? Where are you from, sir? Brookdale? And where are you from? Brookdale. Do any of you want to ask a question before I open it up for the public? You're all turning as red as Irish people did yesterday. Okay, all right. Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment? John, come on down. John, great story in The Two River Times about the Conover Beacon.
Thank you. John Spinelli, 901 Burlington. Uh, thank you guys again, especially, uh, Mr. Mulaney and their department. Like I said, the Conover Beacon was, it came out really well. Uh, my mom walks the dog like around that little, uh, uh, turn right there, so she, uh, she said it looks really nice. Um, I just wanted to, um, ask the Township Committee if I could, uh, we have like a, a sapling growing on the property border with my neighbor. Uh, it's a red bud tree, and I just wanted to ask the Township Committee if I could, uh, maybe try to donate it to the, uh, Town Hall or one of the parks, do, do like, uh, veterans and, or volunteers, Middletown veterans and volunteers, like Memorial Tree or something like that.
Um, yeah, Vic Weims is really the right person to talk to. I, I don't want to pretend like I'm an arborist or anything like that, so I don't know at which point you can move a tree like that, um, but I'm sure Ted can connect you with Vic, and he's kind of the guy that knows about trees. Oh, yeah. He got a little spidey sense knowing that I mentioned his name during a Township Committee meeting, so, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll connect you with, uh, with Vic.
I was gonna say, well, I'm unemployed until, uh, April 8th, so I have plenty of time on my hands to come in during the day to, uh, see if we could try to find a good location for it, so.
Okay. All right, we'll, we'll hook you guys up.
All right, thank you.
You got it. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Going once. All right, come on down, Don. Uh, well, yeah, yeah, I'm sure now. You want to go after him? After him, okay. Hey, Don.
How you doing? My name's Don Watson. I live at 1 Collinson Drive in New Monmouth. Um, I just had an idea for John's tree, you could plant it on, on one of a road by the Veterans Housing. You know, that would be a good spot for you.
Definitely. Yeah, that's, that's actually a good, good idea.
Yeah.
Very good, Don. See? You're thinking back there.
Oh, my goodness, I thought I smelled something.
Thank you, that's all I got. All right, thanks, Don. Wayne? Just, just, um, so that the record is clear, because Kira's gonna tell me this anyway, just one, one of you can speak at a time, all right? So just one of you identify yourself, name and address, and then feel free to, uh, um, you know, utilize your time, and then we can have each of you speak if you'd like.
Okay. Well, Wayne Van Sant, uh, Rolling Knoll Drive, Middletown. I was just wondering if the Township was made aware that, um, St. Mary's plans to rent out Modern Day to a CAPS charter school. Um, under their prior building use, they just like to obtain building and use it as they like, without prior notification given to towns, to the town. So I just wanted to see if they were aware of that.
Um, we, well, uh, yes, uh, I'm a St. Mary's parent, so, um, I, I, I was notified as a St. Mary's parent. Um, the town has made outreach, um, to St. Mary's to have them come in, um, for further explanation as to what the plans are, um, for Modern Day, um, because we do have some questions, um, and, but we'll afford them the same opportunity that every other application and, and person and/or business slash nonprofit has, to come in and meet with us and, and make any proper applications that they need to for the certificate of occupancy that they would need for the school.
Okay, and they are just from 36 other districts as far away as Patterson, Newark, and stuff like that. Just so, I feel like Middletown itself, you know, the other residents should be able to be notified and speak up as they just released it to St. Mary's parents.
Hmm. All right, thanks, Wayne.
Kathleen Gaines, Chanowich Court. Um, as a resident, uh, living across the street from St. Mary's, I'm also a St. Mary's school parent, uh, for the last 10 years, um, and a resident that lives across the street, and I do hope that you do all consider this, um, application from them. You know, it is, it's not Modern Day as it was before. This is a, you know, 200-person school, um, that, as Wayne had mentioned, coming from 36 different communities, um, Asbury Park, Camden, Neptune, and so forth. Um, and I think it's, it will make the environment and the community, it will be, have a big impact on our community. So we just, the, the way it was written to us was almost like it was a done deal, um, in that letter, so we just wanted to see really what was, what really is the situation here, um, and that the whole community should be made known of this, because this will impact the entire town.
Hmm. Um, no, I, I appreciate that. I, I certainly think that there, um, the, the basis that the town will make any decisions on comes from the zoning, construction, code enforcement, uh, DCA rules that are set forth, um, for what comes and constitutes the, the necessary equipment to, um, have a school like that. Um, but, uh, those, those decisions will be made by those proper, um, officials, our construction official, our fire marshal, uh, our zoning officer, our planner, um, those decisions, decisions lie in their hands. Um, and, uh, but, but obviously, just like everybody else, we have to afford them the opportunity, um, whatever the tone or tenor of the, um, the notification was, um, uh, does not stop the township from having the, uh, ability to seek an application and seek answers and/or set the requirements that the state and/or town has for any other business or, uh, use that it would, um, require, uh, under the ordinance. All right? Good? Okay. Yes, sir, come on down.
Thanks, Tom Zaner, Chanowich Court. Also, I just had a question, um, in terms of the, the communication around, around the charter school. Um, obviously, if it's conforming use or, you know, whatever other reviews have to be done, is there like a central point of contact? Because there's a lot of, you know, questions and concerns with the, uh, with the, the parent group on Facebook.
Sure. Um, which I'm not a part of, just, just to be clear. Um, that will probably roll through our zoning and planning office, Tom. So, um, so Erin, um, and Amy Sitrano, um, our zoning officer and, and our planner, so that will really, they, they will be part of that process, but there's also a construction side, which our construction official would be in charge of, as well as our fire marshal buddy, Skelly. Uh, all of them will play, you know, equal parts in this.
I, I appreciate that. I mean, in terms of just communication outward, um, is, uh, should we expect that things will be posted on the, on the Township website? Will we have to file Oprah requests? You know, what? Will we have to file OPR requests? You know, what, what would that actually look like?
Uh, well, a- at this point in time, there's no um, there's no application or, or anything that the town has received. So um, it, it would really, um, you know, Tony Mercantante will, will kind of be the, the lead in, in all honesty. I guess I, you know, sorry, Tom. There, you know, but, but Tony will be uh ultimately whoever oversees all of those departments will be able to, to fill in anybody that wants further information as to what part of the process um the CAPS school is going through. You know, I've met with parents um both uh, you know, here at Town Hall, I've, my office has received calls um and at drop-off, right? Um, and, and pickup. Um, and, and that's okay. That, that's, I know there's a lot of questions out there, and there's a lot of desire for more information, um, you know, and, and I don't blame any parent for, for wanting that. So um, I, I, I continue to expect that those calls and questions will, will come in. Um, but at this juncture, we, you know, while they, the, the email said September, um, you, you know, at, at this point in time, the, the town doesn't have a date that they can or, or can't do it. They have to come to the town first before they can do anything else.
Completely understand. There may be, it may be a conforming use. There may not be any issues, but um, uh, Mr. Mercantante would be our point of contact and essentially.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
That's all. Thank you so much.
No problem. Any, any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Okay, seeing no other members of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and adjourn.
Second.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adjourn.
Have a great night, everybody. Thank you all so much.